Cell phones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Messer? Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here, thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment that, uh, I didn't know if folks knew that Mr. Messer, uh, is on a work, out of town for work. Um, he just let us know today. And, um, I'm not sure Mr. Davis is not here, but anyway. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, June 24th, 2019. Regular meeting, June 24th, 2019, and the special public meeting, July 25th, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Committee reports. Um, Mr. Davis is not here, is there? Can you? Ms., oh, okay, Ms. Bubby, can you do that report?
This is bad.
Madam Bubby.
Madam Bubby. Vice President Bubby or something. Tighty.
Uh, yes, uh, actually this is probably the most, um, easy discussion since I was in the jumping.
Okay.
That she has some other areas she wanted to point out was the review of the criminal background checks. Because we hadn't really, uh, as a, as a policy, looked at that. And, uh, we had questions about, you know, who had the authority to, uh, override the, uh, kind of investigate, uh, great areas and make those decisions. And we decided that, uh, we would continue that discussion, uh, and we have more specifics in it because we thought that was important. The policy that we have now is a very broad policy and most of the, uh, most of the decisions regarding, or the process regarding criminal background checks is in our protocol, our administrative protocol.
Right, and then I think we spoke with Mr. Hoin about trying to align, because there were so many different ones depending on your job. And we were trying to align them with something, um, even across the board.
That's correct. So, um, and Ms. Bowers wants to point out something else, uh, that is what I would like to highlight in this report. And I presented for stuff that was covered.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments, Ms. Bowers?
No.
On the report? Okay. Do board members have questions or comments? Okay, moving on, Ms. Bolton, please present the June 20th, 2019 Student Achievement Committee Report.
Of course, thank you. I certainly will. Um, we've already, uh, as a board, taken action, uh, and endorsed and followed through and printed the, um, Student Support Guide and Conduct, and that was discussed and, and accepted. And then we sent it to the board. Uh, we also, um, had an issue regarding, um, SCPA and membership, uh, by the executive director. And I think that's been resolved as well. We had a very outstanding Growing Well presentation, uh, and, um, you know, wanted to emphasize the importance of, uh, not only the Growing Well folks, but also Interact Health, uh, and particularly Francie Woolgan, who is the person that somehow gets this money together and has allowed us to have more, I still believe it's true, more school-based health centers in our district than all of them combined in the state of Ohio. And so, we're very for, we're very fortunate to have that kind of partnership. And there's some specifics as to what they do and, and where they're located. We had, um, a discussion about the good food purchasing policy and, uh, implementation of that policy and, and, um, uh, did find that it's a good thing to do, but it's also much more costly, uh, and that we have to be aware of that. And we had a wonderful presentation from the folks with Girls With Pearls, uh, Most Valuable Kids, uh, and felt that that needed to be extended throughout. And I can personally testify, uh, to a member of our family being impacted by it and feeling positive. And then we had also a presentation with Terrace Metrics regarding assessing, um, kind of on a human scale, an individual scale, uh, the well-being of our students and how to do that properly, behaviorally measuring, if you will. And, um, did emphasize, though, that we were particularly interested in their assessment because we already have, uh, very fortunate to have, uh, an awful lot of, um, service provided by the Mind Peace, uh, folks. Uh, and I submit and hope for acceptance.
Okay, thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Morosky, followed by Ms. Bowers.
I just had one question, um, and this is just to, to the chair to jog my memory. And I know we had emailed about it a little bit, but in the, after that student achievement committee meeting, did we assign administration to get with Terrace Metrics about the measurement piece? I thought we had, and...
We assigned, uh, I think a couple of things, but one that I remember is for them to, to perhaps meet with them and see better, more detailed, uh, among professionals and experts. But I think there was also an issue that was raised as well, and that Terrace was already functioning in a couple of our schools. And an issue was raised about how did they get dispensation to do so? So I know that, I believe the deputy was going to follow up or, or legal, or have legal counsel figure that out.
Okay.
Because usually it requires a great deal more.
Okay. Because I know they were at Riverview East, and so I guess I can wait till assignments or informally do it now if we could have that follow-up with Terrace Metrics.
That'd be great.
On both of those pieces?
Yes, both. And it was Riverview and another school.
It was Riverview East for sure.
South Avondale.
Was it South Avondale? South Avondale.
Yeah. So I think that's, uh, would be useful because there was some sort of special arrangement, uh, that was developed in order for them to pursue some of that.
Right, like, so what, what was that, A, and then B, if it is something that we would want to pursue?
And I should emphasize, we felt strongly that there's so many opportunities of assessments. We're doing, you know, focusing and having on the whole child. And the, part of the strategic plan is the emphasis of the individual and focusing on the individual child. So that, like, might be of use for that.
Yep.
Um, in addition to the Terrace Metrics, I was present for that presentation. I have lots of questions and concerns about this.
Right.
Um, being a mental health clinician for over 20 years and working with CPS students, um, the term assessment means something different than what's presented. So I would look forward to being part of that group discussion if they come back, um, before the Student Achievement, um, Committee, or a small group or what have you, to talk about some of the concerns I do have with this, um, how this is rolled out, how parents are informed, how the data issues, uh, who's looking at information just because of confidentiality? Um, and if this is a, um, process that's needed to work in collaboration with PBIS, what is the outcome, what is the measurement, how do you evaluate after you do a pre and a post? Because they talked about a follow us, they call it assessment, but it's really a survey. And then, and then the spring survey. And I would, um, want to know what is happening in the middle. Is that expectation of teachers doing something to make the post survey look different than the pre survey? Which means that's, that's something different, too. So I would love to, um, be present when that discussion occurs.
I'm, I'm not sure that it will come back to student achievement. It probably will go to the administration, which was the action that was taken. But I certainly think we should always make use of the expertise of our board members. And I know we appreciated you being there. I do know, too, that there were some other concerns raised by some of the already existing providers in the district. Uh, but I, I felt strongly, uh, that Mr. Morosky had brought this to us and it, it, it bared investigation, and now I think it is in the hands of the administration. If it comes back to student achievement, we will not proceed without you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I had questions, but I think you all answered it, so, um, I won't proceed that.
And I will say, the longer the, the session went, the more detail was required. And they were very forthcoming on a number of issues, uh, but it was something that our, our professionals would have to, um, dig deeper.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions or comments about that report? Ms. Bolton, moving on, um, can, uh, please present the June 26th, 2019 Audit Committee Report.
Okay. Uh, this one, too, is very deep in the weeds and, and largely because our wonderful internal auditor and our audit committee had really commissioned some more kind of, not investigative, but more research and comparative analysis of what internal auditing really should mean in the public sector. And so, we had a very long report from the folks that, uh, we chose to have help us with that. And that was Randy Coombs, um, from BDO Risk Advisory Services. And he and the internal auditor presented a, a number of issues that we wanted to look at and, and they wanted to investigate a bit more. The audit committee, individual members, had not any concerns about what was being said or presented, but did think that it's possible that there are aspects of the, of the audit charter, which we seem to look at every three weeks for some reason, but, uh, that the audit charter probably needed to be reviewed from a standpoint of, um, their role because they think that the charter is maybe too broadly drawn regarding the power of the audit committee and the responsibilities that they assume. So there is a work group that's being put together by the internal auditor, uh, in order to kind of look at strategic risk and also to review the charter. Uh, and then, of course, we had the treasurer's financial updates, which went very well with the audit committee.
Thank you. Do board members have questions about the audit committee report? Okay, moving on, uh, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Can you please, um, give us a report on the July 11th Strategic Engagement Planning Committee?
Okay. On June 24th, um, the, uh, there were three of us, me, um, board member Bolton and board, board member Messer, uh, were assigned to meet and discuss any possible draft changes to the strategic plan. Um, so we met, uh, we talked about recommended changes. Um, and I think we all came up with a conclusion, and we're ready to present on August the 9th, superintendent and ourselves. Um, some of them, uh, minor changes to some of the wording for the, um, five measures. There was one, student-centric decision-making, which revised as student-centered. Um, and then systems was revised to re, um, optimize capabilities. Um, so I think pretty much we're all in alignment with those changes and we're ready to go.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the report? Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present the July 18th Student Achievement Committee Meeting Report.
Yes, uh, the first order of business was, um, the Melrose YMCA pool, which we had all expressed an interest in. And unfortunately, um, we will not be able to be using the pool because the, um, vision mission of what Melrose is going to be, uh, does not, uh, include a, a pool access. However, uh, the, Ms. Layer, who visited with us representing the Y, was very clear and we made her say it, I think, three times, that they are very interested in the initiative regarding our safe swim, uh, in the district for our, our littlest, uh, students. And so that she mentioned a couple of pools that could be available, uh, for use and promised to partner with us. As far as we were concerned, it was a promise, uh, as well as a statement. Another item of business, as it's been, uh, part of what we've been doing for a couple of years, and that is the safety piece. Um, and it's important, particularly for the, uh, board, to be aware that, uh, on the safety issue, one of the things out in the district, and we've heard it here at board meetings, too, is that until we update our district-wide, um, safe routes to school or, or pedestrian safety, um, plan that was, I think, done by us in 2013, a lot of things can't get done. Then, I know Mr. Hoin then found out for us that most of that safety stuff now, these years, can only pertain to three or four buildings at a time. And so, Mr. Morosky was clear and brought to the attention of the committee that the city and a number of city folks are putting together a, uh, young youth pedestrian safety committee. And so, there are all these numbers of folks that are doing things. And, uh, it was then suggested that perhaps, uh, we make sure we have representation on those committees. But then also, further suggestion was made that we, at least with the board's approval, appoint and start at least either an ad hoc or a subcommittee of the board that's going to be focused on these next few months on pedestrian safety, whether it is revising some parts of the, um, uh, safe routes to school or whether it's making sure that we keep a close hand on what is going on at the city regarding our students and our buildings. So, uh, we had people at the meeting that raised their hand and wanted to be on a, uh, ad hoc or subcommittee to, to work on that. And, um, uh, I think there's also been further action on the Pedestrian Safety Task Force, which was going to include young people as well, mostly our kids. Um, so we felt strongly that maybe we ought to be a part of that. And also, since then, I think Mr. Landsman has reached out and has started to put some dates together and would like board representation, but more particularly, we want to have our own community involvement as well. And so, the list there, some of the folks that were particularly interested in being a part of it. And then we would perhaps need a administrative liaison assigned. So we are recommending that indeed that happen. I think Mr. Davis and Mr. Morosky, and I felt strongly that that would be useful and wanted to come to the board for approval for that because if you then approve these minutes, we'll at least start down that road, no pun intended, about pedestrian or roads or what have you. Um, but we would like, perhaps if we vote yes on these minutes, that that would allow us to go ahead with either ad hoc or subcommittee so that we don't have other people determining the safety of our children alone or without us. Um, and then another issue was the crossing guards discussion that just was raised that we're going to be making a decision, and we did, you all, we all did, uh, later on, about a six-month effort to investigate in the treasurer's, trying to figure out monies and what have you. And then, uh, we did ask, uh, Lauren Worley, in the passing of the baton, if you will, of, of Community Learning Centers, to the Assistant Superintendent. We wanted an update of where we were with lead agencies and who was, uh, resource, who were the resource coordinators? And I think that's still in a state of flux, but we got a good report on that. We had an LSDMC survey results, and we have some things we still would like to see kind of tabulated a little bit more. And then, uh, we also had kind of internal discussion about the reworking of the SAC work plan and also meeting dates at that point in time. Um, the third, the third Thursday's difficult at the time that we meet. And also, the instructional people are very much involved, that are our liaison, are very involved with the principal meetings. But the best we could do to change was to change our, um, August and September and October, that we could not change the November and the December. And that this time, too, we're keeping the finance when it, when it is, which is the third Thursday at four. So the, uh, we had our, uh, August meeting, the first Thursday. Our September is the second Thursday of, uh, uh, yeah, of, of September. And then, uh, October has to be the first Thursday. But we, uh, hopefully can get that worked out. And as we all know, the board's calendar runs by the year, not by the school year. So that's something we need to think about as well. Um, and I think that concludes those meetings.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the report? Yes.
This is regarding the pedestrian and safety traffic. Because as you all well know, I walk the streets a lot, but in the healthy way. I mean, I am...
I'm glad you, I'm, I'm glad you cleared that, that bubble.
Yes, I'm, I, I, I'm training for a half marathon, so...
Yeah, she walks the street. Her name is Bubbles. This is very bad.
But, but what I noticed...
Cut the video and the streaming.
But, uh, it, you know, so I, I, I notice frequently, all the, you know, all the business, uh, people, not business people, but the fleets that are out there, the construction, the, uh, parks, the, uh, delivery, the food. And if we can also engage the Chamber of Commerce to have like a safe driver campaign, uh, you know, to, uh, to check, not, well, some are very good and, I mean, they're just like any driver out there. Some are very diligent and some would just about run you over to get to their next job. But, uh, I would, I would say that including the Chamber of Commerce in this, uh, with all of their fleets would be, uh, a good way to...
Excellent.
Help get some more community engagement around this.
Right.
Um, my, my question, um, again, about the task force, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Um, there is a city task force that Councilman Landsman?
Yes.
Leads, and then there's this safety subcommittee? Is that different?
Uh, it, it's, it is different, uh, and it's, it's convened in an effort to make sure that we know what that other group is doing and what that group knows what we're doing. And the, and so, it's, uh, it, it sounds like it's less, it sounds like it's making it more confusing, but actually, we've had some considered discussions that it would make it less confusing.
It's, yeah, because it seems like there are layers of this. Now, my, my concern...
And I think Mr. Morosky might want to speak to that because he was very vocal about the need for what was about to happen and how we could participate.
You can finish with your concern if you want.
Well, my concern is looking at the list. I mean, I'm always happy when people volunteer. But doesn't, isn't necessarily, I mean, to be, I want to make sure that there's a, an appropriate cross-section of our community voicing their concerns. And just looking at the committee, I would say no.
Yeah, it's all white.
Yes.
Yeah, no, absolutely. This is not, this is not the finalized committee. These are people that literally raised their hand in the meeting.
And that's fine. I'm glad they did, but...
This is not going to be the rep, but I think more importantly than the names of the people is the, the idea. So here, when, when Mr. Hapner reported to us, and Dave Hapner, for those of us who know him, is very, very in the weeds when it comes to engineering and understands engineering at least better than I do. And he, um, he had brought a number of recommendations for every single school in the district that would help with our safe routes efforts, that he had gathered by actually talking to principals. He didn't come out of his head. As Ms. Bolton referenced, I was adamant. At one point, I asked him, I went, where did you come up with this? Is this your idea or is this, what kind of backing does this have? And he had community support. At the same time, Councilman Landsman is convening his, um, youth safety team with, um, our students, primarily the three students at Walnut Hills who graduated from Cove Dale last spring, who made that rap video that became popular. And then, who started talking about spreading to other schools through a city council committee. And now we have Dave Hapner and principals, and then we have us talking about safe routes. And it's just, it's just so much happening, and none of these people are talking to each other. And so, I got with Greg and said, this needs to happen together. And if you're having a youth safety council with our students and the district at the same time as looking at their whole safe routes plan with ODOT and DOTE and your people, and then Mel McVeigh has her Vision Zero that's being managed by citizens, which is good, but none of these things are happening together. And so, bringing in activists like Mr. Baumann and Vision Zero and Mel McVeigh at Transportation and DOTE so that there's a more unified process for going forward. So Greg, I suggested, because I know Ms. Bolton had been adamant about safe routes in the past and currently, that we at least start with some sort of meeting of like seven or eight people. This committee can grow, it certainly needs to be more representative. But as far as having district buy into what the city's doing and vice versa, because they don't know what we're doing. And we don't know what they're doing, but I'm on emails, Ozzy's on emails, you're on, people are on all these different emails of things happening, and no one knows what's going on. So trying to bring it together, I know it looks confusing, but we have a lot of experts that want to help that have done a lot of the legwork the city's about to redo and screw up. Or vice versa, not to pick on them, I mean, we might do the same thing. So it's just in Everton, like, let's try to package it up. And so, we're looking at meetings, um, to, to schedule. Councilman Landsman had one of his aides send a doodle poll. Um, and Ms. Bolton and myself were on that email exchange to figure out, like, let's all get in a room, throw this stuff, throw this spaghetti on the wall and figure out how to move forward so we can make safe streets for kids.
I'm sure if I could speak to that, too. I think one of the pivotal, uh, issues as well was that as we looked at the, uh, we were the only, or the first school district to present a district-wide plan, uh, back in 13 or whatever. And there was a million-dollar grant, 400,000 of it was spent. And the other wasn't necessarily on what we had been working on. But more particularly, um, the, the need to revise that plan, uh, in some sort of phased way. There's still some sense as to who in the administration would have to have that responsibility. Uh, and so I know that that went back to the administration as well.
Thank you. Okay, yes.
Um, just at the last page of the minutes, I just wanted to call it out because I like to call it out periodically. Uh, Mr. Morosky advised, uh, section. Um, I would like to this school year, um, have maybe a more serious conversation unless in passing about ending open enrollment. Um, and I've brought that up a number of times in SAC, I brought it up here, we've done assignments, we found out we're not making money off of it. And so, I don't know if I'll make an assignment later today or if we can just keep that on our radar as a possibility for next school year that we consider any open enrollment. And I also, um, it gave me credit in the minutes, but it's, I only stole Mr. Davis's good ideas that maybe high schools need to have more boundaries going forward, too. So I just wanted to call that out, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the report? I need a motion to approve the committee reports.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Superintendent Mitchell, please present the first presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight's presentation is an update to the development of the strategic plan. Um, what I'm going to present tonight is based upon all of the community engagement as well as engagement with the board and engagement with the staff committee. All of the, um, suggestions, recommendations that the board has asked for as well as the staff committee has been integrated into the new strategic plan. At your, um, seats, you have a copy of the new strategic plan there. So I'll just do a quick overview in terms of the goals. Sorry, can you hear me now? In terms of the goals, um, for the district. So the first one is around student center, uh, decision-making, putting our students first. And you can see, um, specifically what the goals, what the goal entails. And then you will also see the very specific strategies around decisions that are made that are, um, about student data, about access to the arts, athletics, leadership opportunities, clubs, and then also looking at the budget process. And as we do our work, making sure that we keep our kids, um, at the center of all the decisions that are made. Goal number two is health and safety, uh, which means that we focus on the well-being of not only our kids within our schools, but also within our staff members and our partners. And so, we do everything to make sure that we put this at the forefront of our work in terms of our schools being a healthy and safe place to be. And then you can see the specific strategies around preventative measures for mental health, um, great learning environments with a focus on positive school culture, and then having facilities that are safe. Um, this just talks about the fact that our, um, schools, our healthy schools start with great staff members and, um, and leadership and the employee experience. And this continues with positive school culture, it's part of the strategy, minority recruitment. Goal number three has a focus on community empowerment and engagement and collaboration. And then you see the very specific goal areas or strategies that are aligned to that goal. Reducing barriers, connecting and involving families, communicating, communicating internally and externally and being transparent and consistent. And then also really having a focus on customer satisfaction. And then this is additional information around creating great communities. Optimize capabilities, this was at one point in time called systems. So this is really centered around having systems that are, uh, data-informed and that are user-friendly, that are really focused on... focused on efficient and effective systems. And then you can see the very specific strategies related to continuous improvement in the classroom and outside of the classroom operationally, data prioritization of the highest impact decisions, looking again at the budget process, and then also employee engagement. The last goal area is growth. So the board expressed the fact that it is, the board is very much interested in maintaining the rich heritage of our neighborhoods and celebrating those neighborhoods, and Cincinnati becoming a destination district. CPS is a destination district. And so, the board expressed an interest in growing our footprint across the Cincinnati area. And so, you can see some very specific goals around enrollment in terms, in terms of recruiting, recruiting students, expanding educational choices that make our schools attractive, and acquiring properties and facilities to be able to facilitate the expansion. So, within the strategic plan, if you look at the document, it leads off with a table of contents, followed by the executive summary, which talks about Cincinnati Public Schools becoming a destination district of excellence. The major focus is still really much focused on continuing our effort as it relates to preparing our students for life. But you can see that there's a caveat that's been added through academic achievement, personal well-being, and career readiness. So at the end of the day, we want to make sure that our kids graduate on time and are accepted into one of three pathways. Page four then outlines the rallying cry that really says that we are our city's best choice for education, that education is a social justice issue and mission. And so, we are leading a movement that will change the, the face of education as it's viewed in this region. On page six, it also brings to forward the call to action that we really want to make sure that our kids are prepared to not only make a meaningful contribution to society, but quite honestly, influence society. Page six then lays out the cultural tenants in terms of we care, we collaborate, we continuously improve, and we commit to success. And then there are descriptors that have been updated to go along with those specific cultural tenants. Then on page nine and ten, you can see are the very specific goals and the strategies that I just outlined on the PowerPoint slide. And then on page ten, I'm sorry, page twelve, it leads into the very specific measures for each goal area. And so, the first area is student-centered decision-making, centered decision-making, so it's all about me. And so, you can see that we're looking, quite honestly, at kindergarten readiness, mathematics and English Language Arts at grades three, six, nine, ACT, AP, advanced placement, graduation and acceptance into a career pathway, are just a few of the measures to highlight from that area. Health, safety, and environment. We are looking at some very specific measures around providing preventative measures for our kids in terms of wellness, mental, physical, emotional, psychological, and intellectual well-being. We've decided to repurpose how we actually use our school's social workers as an example to actually do social work, work moving forward. We've increased the number of security personnel that will be within our schools, and we're providing a lot more professional development and support as it relates to social and emotional learning, which would entail running some continuous improvement projects. So, I'm on page thirteen now, just really going through the measures for each one of the major goal areas. And then engaging, engaging our community, engaging our parents. So we plan to increase the number of resource coordinators within our schools. We also want to make sure that all of our schools have a parent, organized parent group. And so, you can see how we're stepping out our progression of parent groups throughout the district. So those are just a few measures to indicate engagement. Becoming good at being better in terms of optimized systems. You'll see that we're going to be running continuous improvement projects, not only within our schools as it relates to academic achievement, but also here at Central Office as it relates to operations, transportation, facilities, food service. And then the last area is growth. And so, I'm on page fifteen. And the measures that will be used to indicate whether or not we're being successful in this area really boils down to our enrollment increasing each year, as well as being able to acquire properties and facilities in the next best place that a school should be positioned within our district. And then the preceding pages, or I'm sorry, the pages that follow really outline all the people who contributed to this work, including the board, the staff committee, the design committee, administrators, principals, strategic partners, students, teachers, LSDMC, and civic and community organizations. So, this is the work that has been produced in collaboration with the community and the board, and reflects the changes that the board and the community asked for as late as July. And so, we've made sure that we have included all of that within the plan. And so, you will notice that in the superintendent's recommendation, there is a recommendation that I am making that the board approve this final document that has been vetted by the community and by the board and the staff committee several times.
Okay, thank you. It's been vetted quite a bit, so we know that. Mr. Morosky?
I just want to say, congratulations and kudos to everybody that's worked on this from the beginning all the way till this product. I think it looks great. I think it reflects on the board's priorities. I think it reflects the community's priorities, administration, teachers, kids. Like, it's moving in the right direction. It looks great. It's easy to read. I just want to say congratulations and kudos. I know it was a pain in, at times, but all good things can be. And I, it has been vetted a lot. And that's all I have to say. So, I look forward to showing it off on Friday with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Davis?
I, I too want to congratulate you and your, and your team. I still have some concerns around the lack of measurements in regard to us as a district getting outside of the building and getting more involved in the neighborhoods. As society continues to creep inside of our school buildings, you know, it was, it's nice to have extra resource coordinators, but if resource coordinators aren't getting outside of the building. It's, and it's, it's interesting to me, the number of times I read "school-community," because I remember ten, fifteen years ago, saying to Ms. Bolton that the Community Learning Center model should be called the School-Community Learning Center model, because that's what it is. But our problems, and what we have a cliquey, like, the cliquey model is community learning centers. They're outside of the building. It's a difference between a community and a school community. And I think we better pay quite attention to that as we go forward. The school-community is internal and the community is external. And we need to get our, our schools and our, and the folk that are internal to our schools more external, or we're going to continue to lose the social battles that we're losing, that, that, that come before education. We're losing so many social battles that come before education. It's just tough to win. And I, I don't see enough of that. But I do, I do think that there is enough of, uh, outline that in so many places that it can be galvanized as we continue. You know, it's a strategic plan. It's not concrete. It continues to grow. And I just wanted to mention that as I congratulate you and your team on, on a great job.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
I think it's, I think it's very good. And I, and I don't think it looks like other school districts' strategic plans. And I, that's one of the things I like about it. I think it's very reflective of, of Cincinnati and, and our issues. I know we never like to talk too much about social determinants, because we never want anybody to use that as an excuse. But the reality is, we, we deal with social determinants of education every day. And I think as we, at Mr. Davis's point, implement this, it'll be up to the board to, to be as radical and reactionary as possible to, to allow you all to do the best that you can in, in overcoming those social and economic determinants. Minor thing, again, the Futels live in East Walnut Hills. I don't know if you get to change the whole report, but we did say that the last time, and that's-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Chuck and Marcia Futel live in East Walnut Hills, and they're listed as Walnut Hills. So, that's just a minor thing, but it won't be minor necessarily to them. But the, the other piece is the, I still think, and I know we, there's not any rewrite, but in, in the presentation, something that the president brought up, in that first, why we have student-centered decision-making and student this and what have you, is so that children can reach their academic abilities. And I think there is a, a, a way of presenting that, even that first one, to talk about, that's why we're doing, to remind people what the mission is. Because that is one of those issues that have been brought, that is sort of a criticism, is there enough about it? There is in the goals and the strategy and the measures, but just the narrative probably needs to be emphasized. And I do want to say that, again, I'm a logo freak on this one. I know the logo is in the process of changing, but I don't really want to see our, our logo, old or new, without those three things that we've decided are important. Because I think that's historic. It, I think the personal well-being represents the last dozen years of CPS that has separated us, whether it's the Community Learning Center or the school-based health centers, or Mind Peace and Mental Health Service, or whatever. That, that personal well-being, nobody says that. And, and I think that's historic, both as a culmination and as a stepping off. And the career readiness, that's what the community wants to see. And number one, of course, is, you know, academic achievement. I think those three things are part of the logo and need to appear whenever possible. Thank you. And I congratulate everybody that did it, especially community folks and the, the professionals in our district that made it happen.
Any other comments? I just have one last comment. Having participated in the wonderful event this morning, I was just overwhelmed with emotion and, and gratitude for the way that this was presented. And I know you did more of a skeleton, just overview, but the level of energy in this room today in response to this was excellent. And yeah, they, you know, what everybody said, we'd still have some work to do with it, but it was dynamic. Your team was, I, I can't tell you guys enough that Pam, uh, Ms. Bauer was attended as well, how well they presented it. With, with competence, with confidence, with great leadership, lots of emotion, and, you know, sensitive to where everybody was. So, thank you. It was a lot of work, and it showed this morning. So-
So if I could just say, thank you to the board. You all did push us and challenge us. And we believe that what we have is a better plan. I do hear what you're saying, Board Member Davis. The good news is, is that we don't have a ton of these in print, and so, this will mainly live on our website. We'll, we'll have some collateral that we'll use for events. But we can definitely go back in and intentionally weave into our kids and our families, or our staff members getting out into the community more and understanding what the community is working with. And so, I hear what you're saying, and we will definitely follow up on that. We can also make the fix in terms of East Walnut Hills, the Futels, we'll make that. And really highlight the academic achievement piece as a major part of the student-centered decision-making. So, we appreciate all of the feedback from the board and from the community. This has been a year, a very, very long year. We're excited to go ahead and, and launch this with your blessing if you approve it tonight. I also want to say to the staff members, thank you so very much for all of your hard work and all that you put into this, and all of our staff members across the district. We're very excited to be able to share this with the board and the big presentation on Friday. And we're also very excited that on Monday, we will be sharing this with all of our 3,000 teachers, along with our teachers' union. So we're very excited to bring everyone together around this movement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're ready for our second presentation. Superintendent Mitchell?
Thank you. So I'd like to welcome Sally Westheimer to the podium. You'll recall that we started last school year having Preschool Promise, someone representative come and do an update. And Sal, so Sally Westheimer is here to do an update on the Preschool Promise so far. So thank you, Sally, for coming.
Thank you. Superintendent Mitchell said, make it quick, that you've got a lot on your agenda today. So I really wanted to bring you two updates and a perspective of how things are, are going and how we look at it, and then see if you have any questions. I know what's on everybody's mind is, how are they doing on the executive director search? So I'll start with that and address that. The real answer is, I don't know. What I do know is that there is evidently a wonderful pool of applicants. The interviews started this week. I believe the goal is to make a selection by the end of this month. Beyond that, that's, that, it's a, things are moving along, but I'm not aware of any details beyond that, like how many people they're interviewing and so forth. The second thing that I wanted to mention is, since our joint board meeting, one of the real outcomes of that was to improve the communication touchpoints. And I think it has been going fantastically. There are all sorts of connections with our, our board members, working on different parts of this. Superintendent Mitchell and I have met. I meet very frequently with Vera Brooks in Early Childhood Education, and Treasure Wagner is at our meetings, and we're at, at her meetings. So, we're spending a lot of time thinking together and working together. We had, in fact, a evaluation committee today to take a look at a new evaluation vendor. And of the five committee members, two were CPS employees. And so, we're really coordinating. So I just wanted to, to just let you know, I think both, all of us are really on that. So the perspective or thought that I wanted to bring has to do with where we can have the greatest impact. We have spent a lot of time in these first two years talking about tuition assistance and expanding access for families who might not otherwise have access to high-quality preschool. That has been going very well in our partnership, both at the district and the community. But, maybe but isn't the right word, and, the greatest impact that the Cincinnati Preschool Promise can make, our historic partnership, our work together, is in improving community-based preschool for all children. The tuition assistance is fantastic for those who can't otherwise access high-quality preschool, but our biggest challenge and opportunity is improving those places where three- and four-year-olds in our community are spending their days. So between, with all of the three, four, and five-star rated programs, out of our approximately 9,000 children, three- and four-year-olds who live in the district, I think we're close to 4,000 children in, I hope I have that number, I do, in three, four, and five-star preschool programs. We have another, probably 2,500 children in childcare centers and family childcare homes. It's where our three- and four-year-olds are spending their day and getting their preschool experience that are not up to that quality. And so, the work that is going on now, over a hundred and, nearly 120 community-based preschool providers are now receiving support and improving their quality, and they're probably another- providers are now receiving support in improving their quality, and there are probably another 100 out there serving three- and four-year-olds who are not yet a part of our system. So, the way I want us to think about it is, yes, to tuition assistance, but even more yes, to raising the quality of preschool across the board for all children, regardless of how their preschool is paid. And so, that's just a way of thinking as we go forward, as we think about continuing this important partnership, is not only helping families pay, but regardless of where their funding comes from, that children are in high-quality preschool. I want to lead with the improving quality and then talk about those kids who have had an opportunity to access quality who hadn't otherwise. So, that's just sort of a thought, a way we're thinking about it, the way we're trying to collect data and begin to look at, who are we missing and what is it going to take to ensure that they are in high-quality preschool? So, questions or thoughts?
Board members, questions or comments? Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, Ms. Westheimer. Just two questions, and one is, first of all, I feel you and I agree with the concept that the other sites, we have 2,500 kids in sites that aren't up to quality, they need to be brought up to quality. I'm curious how the tuition assistance, if it, is it able to be given out at the rate it's given out now while, would it be focusing more dollars on bringing sites to quality and less on tuition assistance, I guess, is my, because obviously we don't have endless resources. If we did, it'd be great. Would one take a hit over the other? And then tied to that, I guess, is, how does the wage piece fit into that?
So, I want to be clear, I am not suggesting we divert a single dollar from tuition assistance. And as more community-based programs reach high-quality, more children will be able to access. The original thought was that, once we get the programs up to quality, it will free up a lot of additional dollars. And so, I think that theory is still out there, but I think we're not maybe at the pace that was envisioned. So, we're still going to have to invest in quality improvement and then tuition dollars will be available for those families. The wage piece, the, it is a crisis. Not the wage piece, but the shortage of qualified teachers to work in community-based programs. We have one wage initiative rolled out for those high-quality programs. We literally had a meeting today of our Cost of Quality Committee, which approved the vetting, putting meat on the bones, rolling out two more wage initiatives to help provide supports for people who work in community-based preschool. The challenge is that even with a raise, an increase of two, three, even $4,000 a year, should we be able to do it, they won't remotely be in the ballpark of a, an appropriate wage that encourages people to go into community-based programs. So, we're trying to put in some things that will support it. The only real solution is a public policy solution, to try to influence the state and national level to recognize that a preschool teacher with all the credentials is a preschool teacher, whether in a school district or a community program. So, we're putting some not insignificant Band-Aids on a problem. The real solution is much bigger than what we can do within the resources of the levy.
And that might be something, I'll just throw it out there and then I'm done, that perhaps, you know, as this moves forward, that the Preschool Promise and Cincinnati Public School District and perhaps other organizations, ForC for Children, I mean, we have some powerful organizations in this region to lean on legislators to do that, because I agree with you, it is a policy thing. And I've been happy with and applaud what you all have done with that sort of tiered system for the teachers, trying to, to your point, use your word, Band-Aids, but they're better than no Band-Aids. But there does need to be some sort of change, because these folks are working their tails off in our community for our kids and they get treated like crap. So, I just want to throw that out there as maybe a potential policy, I don't know, something to combine on and combine our efforts, because just this one board member's opinion, I don't know that we always leverage our partnerships to actualize real, meaningful policy change well. And I think, you know, we have a relationship with you all that opens up that door, perhaps. Just a thought.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Davis?
I don't have questions for Sally. I can wait to ask. I've got questions for us about Preschool Promise, but I thought Sally was at our Cincinnati Promise Forward meeting yesterday. I'm pretty up to date on what's going on.
I would say this would be the time. It's okay if you want to raise it now.
Okay, from a process perspective, so Sally started with this morning's evaluation meeting and how two CPS employees are on the evaluation team. How does the board then get information from those two CPS employees about what happened this morning at the evaluation meeting? Like, I want to be honest with you guys, because for me, I'm at an advantage. So, when Leslie Maloney left the evaluation meeting, she sent me as the Cincinnati Promise Forward, not the Cincinnati School Board, but as a Cincinnati Promise Forward meeting, a board member, she sent us an email about this morning's evaluation. I don't know if you all, as Cincinnati Public School Board members, don't care to have the information, but I know that we don't have a process for board members to get the information. I've been saying this for at least 15 months. So, now, I kind of understand where the gaps are, and I want to know, what is our plan? Or is it that I should just be quiet and let the other board members not have as much information as I have on a daily basis because of my other involvement? And you all are welcome to come to Cincinnati Promise Forward meetings, or every Tuesday at 4:30 at the Red Cross. Every first Tuesday, it's four o'clock, we're going back. You're all welcome. It's that public group, public group. But my concern is, there seems to be a lack of opportunity for this board to be informed on what's going on with the Preschool Promise. And like I said, two meetings or three meetings ago, it is in the responsibility here. It is your level.
Can I respond to that?
Please.
I think everybody at the table agrees 100% that there were gaps in communication. At the collaborative meeting, we addressed that in terms of, we made a decision that, first of all, we needed to have more involvement between the two programs in, number one, trying to identify where those gaps were, and number two, having specific people identified to work toward closing those gaps and doing some work. And we did develop, there were people who actually volunteered to do these things, and some of what Sally mentioned about how folks are now starting to communicate, so I know you all are communicating, Father Graham and I are communicating. I'm prepared to give an update at an upcoming meeting, probably not next week, but maybe the week, the time after that, about our discussion and recommendations. I know Ryan agreed to work with developing a communication triage, so to speak. So, the work, I think, is there. I think, just to, I don't know if this helps, but we did say, there are gaps. We need to identify those gaps. If evaluation is one, how do we get the information, whatever? The only thing I can say is, we did assign that workout. Now, it's just a matter of us pulling it back together to see where people are coming up with decisions about then how we move forward to close those gaps.
Thank you.
Yep. And I will be prepared. Father Graham and I had one meeting, we were assigned that by the group, and the joint group. And he and I met, came up with some recommendations. He and I have since had email conversations, and I will be prepared to bring an update to the board, probably within the next couple of meetings, sometime this month.
One final comment on that. Your five appointees, your five school board appointees, were they invited to this meeting? And in your conversations, like with Father Graham and the communication gaps, are you going to have a level that your five appointees can then communicate with the board?
I believe that, I don't know what the, I don't know if there has been a decision made about that, but I believe that Vera has been having contact with the five appointees. At this point, it's the appointees and Vera. Now, having said that, that is one of the things that was communicated to us from the five appointees, or at least three of them, about their interest in having some direct contact with the board.
Any other questions? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, thank you for being here, and thank you for doing this in these last months. I think it's been absolutely crucial. Could I just double-check some numbers, because I wasn't focusing as hard as I should have? You mentioned there's, how many thousands do you believe children are in the three, four, and five?
I believe that there are close to 4,000.
Okay, okay.
That certainly includes all of the CPS preschool.
Sure, sure. 2,500 would be not quite up to that quality or what have you in 120 community-based providers? Is that where the focus is?
It's larger than that, because we have 120 that are actively working to improve, and they're an additional number, and I don't have that number with me that are not yet.
Not part of it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate these numbers, as well, because I, you know, sometimes we don't quite get the numbers.
And I do want to say that one of the reasons I didn't give you a handout in these is some, most of these numbers are approximate, and we are working really hard to try to nail some of them down, but they're approximate.
We can relate. We got that. And then you mentioned there's shortage of quality teachers out there, regardless of the wage piece, but most particularly, perhaps because of the wage piece. Wanted to ask, too, in the governor's budget, is there anything that offers any hope of additional? You mentioned policy decisions, or, you know, a broad base kind of might have to be answering the wage piece or some of these other, did we, what's your knowledge of the governor's budget, since he had talked a lot about preschool?
I'm not very knowledgeable about it. I do know that the publicly funded childcare reimbursement rate is going up.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what impact that will have on the Preschool Promise. Because we are last dollar in, it may mean that we need less tuition assistance, it may not, and we're trying to run those numbers now. In other words, if we, if we have a smaller gap, we may, it may free up dollars for additional children.
Okay. And then just finally, too, that, I know when all this started, there was a concern that there were going to be state mandates that said if particular providers, these many dozens and perhaps hundreds of providers, didn't reach a particular level of quality, that they would not be able to receive the kind of public monies. Is that still a mandate that exists?
It is.
Is that still a deadline that we're worried about?
Yes, very much so. The deadline is June 30th, 2020. So, there's almost a year to go on that. The level that they have to reach is one star, and the Cincinnati Preschool Promise requires three stars. So, we imagine there will be a number of programs who's, who get in the system, but they will not meet the standard for our preschool dollars.
Does that, does that create another kind of strategy path for you, that we want to try to get as many to just one star, to maintain some sort of public funding? I mean, it seems like there's a couple of tracks there.
Yes. We are definitely working hand-in-hand with ForC for Children, whose number-one priority is to get those programs into one star. So, we're, they're our largest quality improvement vendor, and we're really poring over the lists together to get them at least to that level, and then see what opportunities we can provide on top of that to get them to higher quality.
Because thinking back five years, I know we were always worried unintended consequences would be the elimination of units, if you will, or kind of the ending of the whole underground kind of service providers, that has actually been good and helpful to many families. So, that's reassuring.
Right, and I do think that you're raising a point. At the end of June next year, what is our childcare system going to look like if a number of particularly home-based childcare businesses are eliminated? And I, I know many are getting into the system, it's going very rapidly right now, but I don't know how many will be left out in the end.
Great, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you. I will add, though, just a communication piece. Every month, Preschool Promise does report to the Finance Committee. So, from the financial data, we get that, and it's a matter of us reading what we've got. So, there's, the financial piece is working out regarding that. I think there is an interest in having our representatives be more aware of what is the intent of the board, but we also don't want to intrude on the Preschool Promise Board, because they are a separate entity. The other piece, I would say, is we probably still need more information and more liaison, if you will, with the Workforce Development Committee reporting to SAC.
Yes.
Because that is a separate area, and I think that needs to beef up. So, I think that's fixable, and fixable even within our own structure.
Yep. And that was one of the assignments of that collaborative meeting, yes. Mr. Morosky, followed by Ms. Bates?
I was just going to respond to Ms. Bolton. So, responding to Governor and the early childhood piece, so, similar to how his first act was creating that committee for home visiting, and then a lot of dollars were actualized through his budget, and got chipped away a little through the process, but still a lot of money for that cause. He just convened his early childhood committee, which the, obviously won't go through a biennial process, but whatever process the governor wants to go through, it's, this committee will be recommending the second piece of what he made a lot of promises for. And there's only one person from this region who's on it, and it's my boss in my day job, which is nice. And I'm meeting with his Director of Children's Affairs next Monday on behalf of my day job, but I also plan to inquire about what, what will be the end result of this committee? Is it going to be similar to the home visiting? Because in the budget process, it makes sense, you have this committee, it's going to make recommendations for appropriations, but outside the budget process, does this early childhood committee have the same teeth? So, I'll give an update at our next board meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Yes, are new providers coming on to, like, brand-new providers, coming on, online, since the Preschool Promise funding has become available, are you primarily working with those who are already existing in the community?
I would say overwhelmingly existing in the community. I can think of one fantastic program that has come online since we've started and is really filling a significant gap, but overwhelmingly, it is existing providers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much, Ms. Westheimer, for your report. Okay. Does anyone have any kudos? Yes, Ms. Bowers?
I have kudos. I was able to attend the STEM Street event today at Bon Hill, and it was excellent. I think it's their back-to-school event for the community and families in Bon Hill, and I also got to make a chalk bomb, took a picture of it, I didn't get it on my clothes, but I did make it, and it exploded, I did good, and I was excited to do that. The kids were smiling, we were happy. Great job to the administration.
Okay, thank you. Any other kudos? Great. Ms. Bates, please read the retirements.
Yes, I have two retirements to acknowledge this evening, and the first is Deborah J. Myrie, and the second is Corinne Walker. They're both from our civil service personnel, so we thank them for their service to our children and wish them well, and congratulate them on this next, next part of their life.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Our one and only speaker for today is the lady with the cane, Ms. Julie Sellers. And I'm glad that she has a cane, and she's walking around, so. She's moving good. There's mumbling up here that you're moving- There's, there's mumbling up here that you're moving pretty well.
What was that? What did you say? From a what?
Image.
I know, it's really nice having this, it's a weapon right there. Okay, first I would like to say, I'm really excited about the strategic plan and the process that the district went through, and pulling in the community. I think that, um, having the outside, um, group that came in to like, kind of pull it all together was really important. I think it ended up with a great, um, product at the end. Um, I believe that the community, the employees, and, um, parents who were involved, they were all focusing on that whole child. I do agree with Ozzy that when we do talk about community and the community learning center model, I don't think that that is something that is equivalent from school to school, and when we start looking at equity, we really need to look at that clicky model, because that is really the model nationally that everybody wants. And it's a model that we have, and we should be proud of, because it did start here in Cincinnati. And so I think that it's, I think that when teachers hear about where the vision is for this district, I think they're going to be very happy. I think it's really great that, um, we now have a vision and a mission of where we're going to go as we move forward with the district. Um, but the other thing that I wanted to talk about was in the treasurer's report, and I know that this caused some confusion, and I had never seen it listed this way, as Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education for CYC in the contracts. And there are, um, three contracts that are equivalent, um, to $642,000 a year, so that means for that two-year contract, it's, uh, almost a $1.3 million contract. And it kind of concerns me, because it doesn't really talk about what is really being done, and if, if there is something that we can see, so that as a district, we know that we're getting a return on our investment, that is a lot of money that we're spending annually, that I don't always understand exactly what we are getting for our dollars. Um, and I know that this is a second year of the contract, but I think that as we move forward and begin negotiations for next year, if we can look at what is it that they're providing, because what it is that they're providing now might not be what we need for our students today, because it's what they've been doing for the last five or 10 years, and that we need to really look at what they're doing and making sure that it is helping students, and if we can get some measures for that, I think that would be beneficial. But $1.3 million, and really not knowing exactly what we're getting for that, I think that we need to be more fiscally responsible. And I know we've had a great relationship with the CYC for years, but things in education are changing, and are they doing, what they're doing, is it in alignment with the new strategic plan? So that's my comments for this evening, so good luck with the new school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move into our, um, agenda item on board matters. Our first topic is around school social workers. Mr. Davis, I believe that, um, you asked that that be put on the agenda?
I don't remember why, but I do know that, uh, I did have a question about the number of school social workers, and how we could increase them faster, and the, I think the superintendent mentioned in her report
Yeah.
that we would be using the so, the social worker in a different way, to do more social work, and I think that was sort of where we were when I brought that up last time.
Um, it, it, can you respond to that, superintendent?
Uh, yes, so, um, in previous years to this coming school year, our school social workers did a lot of the attendance work, and so through the new budget process, we added nineteen, um, attendance clerks who could really focus on attendance, and they're servicing more than one school, so that the school's social workers could really turn their efforts to social work, work, and be more preventative.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Mr. Davis? Okay, while we're waiting, Ms. Bowers?
I just want to, um, clarify, superintendent, that's not across the board to every school, though. There are specific schools that have this social worker focus more on the social emotional part, because I, I don't believe every school is able to have this component.
So I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent, um, Susan Bunty, or would you like Dr. Carrie Bunker? All right, that'd be great, thank you. So we're really trying to be, um, more preventative as opposed to reactive, and so, um, we are adding additional social work services around social work, and we plan to add more of them in the upcoming years.
So to address the first question about the number of social workers, we agree, we would like to have more, so you'll see that delineated in the strategic plan around the measures, that over the course of the next three years, there will be, um, up to 54 social workers when we conclude the end of the strategic plan. Currently, there are 26, so that will-
Say that number again.
So currently, we have 26 social workers. I believe in the measures section, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe at the end of, um, our superintendent will keep me honest. But I believe at the end of the third year, 54 is the number, so that we are, um, 52, I apologize, so we're doubling. Mm-hmm. So Dr. Bunker is going to talk about the SEL focus in different schools.
So to answer your question in terms of SEL, uh, we're in the process of combining and cross-training the work that was done by the six PBI social workers that were under, um, my leadership last year, um, and learning from the work that we did with those, um, six PBI social workers, as well as our school social workers, and coming all together as one family. So we are cross-training in the attendance piece, so it's, school social workers will still do the social work related to truancy prevention, but the attendance support specialists help with the compliance and the paperwork. Um, all schools will have access to a attendance support specialist, and all schools will have access and have a social worker in their building. The number of days is dependent upon, because we have 26 social workers and many more schools than 26, uh, we, we, through the assignment committee, look at total enrollment, we look at chronic absenteeism rates, we look at QI work and, as current SEL work, to make those allocations in terms of full-time equivalents or FTEs. So, uh, but the data that was used within the assignment committee was looking at total enrollment, the tru, the truancy rates, the chronic absenteeism rates, as well as existing SEL work. So this next year, we'll be working to address the whole child, and not having a separate PBI of social worker and school social worker, we are just going to have social workers looking at the whole child and addressing needs both in truancy as well as SEL. Are we there yet in terms of having, um, a, a comprehensive approach? No, but with the vision and the commitment from the board, we're going to get there as we increase capacity over time.
Yes.
Ma'am Chair, thank you, and thank you for putting this on board matters, because as I look back, uh, at the, uh, social worker, uh, assignment Excel spreadsheet that we got-
Yes.
-that was where my concerns were, how woefully low, um, we are in regards to, especially our high schools. Kids are not getting, it's, it's just not enough access, so I, I'm, I'm here championing however the support we need, um, to provide the district with more social workers. We don't have enough social workers. And I, I, I remember sending the email now, just, because if you look at this, it's just, it's ridiculous, and then they're not even at the school a whole time. They're, they're split up everywhere.
Yes.
And it's like, hmm, no wonder the Woolworth kids came in here and asked for more social workers, because we don't have enough social workers. And I don't know, it's probably, I'll, I'll start to argue this now, or, or encourage this now, so when we get to budget next year, we'll be ready.
Yes, so in the strategic measures for 2019, 20, so this coming school year, we're adding an additional nine school social workers, and then it stepped out to, we get to, um, 22, which will be a total of 54. And so we can look at that and, and potentially make some adjustments, but we, um, value what you're saying.
Well, I appreciate, uh, your, um, description on, on how you assigned them, because that's helpful for me, because even at 54, I mean, it's going to be, still be tough, um, but I appreciate that you're looking at certain elements, like truancy, I mean, that obviously is a sign that we need more help.
Yes.
So I, I, I appreciate what you guys are doing, I'm on your side.
Thank you.
So sometimes, sometimes I'm like, you know, battling against us, well, this one? I'm on your side. We need more social workers, and if I had paid better attention, I probably would have argued it a month ago, to add some more to the strategic plan, but as we said, this thing is fluid, and I'll be, um, opening my big mouth about social workers as much as I possibly can.
We appreciate your support, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, followed by Ms. Bowers.
Yeah, I, I certainly would agree, but I can also remember that this has been an issue for at least eight years, or three master contracts, um, back and forth, and, and it, it might have been the fact, too, that the attendance requirements from the state have helped motivate us to do this right, since we're going to be much more held accountable. And, and it doesn't make sense to pay social workers to do generally a clerical and follow-up piece, so you need to be, I mean, so I think this is a good financial decision as well. I do think, though, to, to take the case of CPS, we, it would, and again, I'm looking for that big wall that tells us what all we're doing everywhere, because I still think we can't grasp it, building by building, but when you actually look at the staffing at every building, there is a remarkable number of people that are not part of the instructional component, and disproportionately, the instructional component is quite low, I think, and, and part of it is that we are investing and have for years and years in that whole child, or in the support system, or what the federal government requires us to do with our, you know, the kids with particular learning issues. So, but it, it would be interesting, and I don't want us, I don't want the board to get into those sorts of things from a budget standpoint necessarily, but we spend a tremendous amount of money on non-instructional services in the district, and I think that's something to be proud of, but it also calls into question our instructional capacity. Um, so, uh, this, these are big, good issues to be talking about. I appreciate you bringing it to the attention of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
I just, I want to thank you for, um, the explanation, um, and I do remember that it was a, your building-
Yes.
-on something, you had to start somewhere, and I appreciate, um, you all determining how to choose what school to increase social work support, um, but to board member Davis's point, when the Woolworth students came in, um, and we talked about, he talked about attendance was, it's huge for social workers, but also, I want to make sure we keep in mind for equity, understanding that we may have students showing up to school at Woolworth, because that's the safe place, but what else do they need?
Right.
Um, and they vividly said that over and over and over, um, and understanding that they're our partners in CPS, our mental health partners, um, the component for social emotional learning that they provide, there's a gap because of funding for partners, and so some of that gap service you're, you're addressing with social emotional learning, but that is the need for all of our school, is that prevention support services, which is what the students were basically saying. So when we're looking to build and place social workers as we build for the next three years, we need to look at that, the equity.
I absolutely agree. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Yes, so if I could, um, to Board Member Bolton's point, um, we reallocated money for this school year, um, that was dedicated to coaching of teachers for math specialists, providing direct services to teachers who work with students, and so we've made that investment, along with, um, our previous superintendent's investment of the reading specialists, who specifically work with students, in addition to the Microsoft, um, teachers that we hired for this coming school year. And so we have made, um, significant investment, um, in this budget as it relates to, uh, staffing that services our students in terms of instructionally, in addition, as well as the, the equity asked from the schools, personnel staffing in terms of, um, instructional staffing, with staffing that was granted based upon a school's individual requests as it related to equity. So I hear you loud and clearly, we'll continue to invest in our schools instructionally as well. Point well taken, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Davis, did we meet your need there?
Absolutely, I appreciate you, again, I'm, ma'am Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all so much for the clarification. Great, okay. Next item under board matters is the tax abatement agreement timeline discussion. Um, you, we, what we did was included the talking points that I think were requested the last time, but it, it feels like it's been such a long time since we had this discussion. Um, I, Ms. Bolton, were you the one who put it on?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Ms. Bolton to kind of lead the facilitation of this.
Um, I, I think what was of interest to me, and I think the whole board, was that where we were with the quote negotiations, and I think last time that we met, Mr. Hoyne or someone presented the fact that we had, uh, and maybe he can repeat that, but as my recollection is that we, uh, sent our resolution, our public resolution, uh, to the, uh, staffs of city council, uh, members, and also to the city manager, and that there was some dialogue between the, um, our negotiators and the city negotiators, and the city negotiators were interested in somehow wanting to understand and make an issue about the state foundation monies, and our response was it was not germane. And has there been any other meetings since then?
That's where we are. Um, we also shared the, um, resolution with the legal department, which I, I, is kind of my contact over there. Um, I reached out again after our last meeting to say the board would have another meeting this evening, if there's any update of, you know, or we can get together, we offered to schedule a meeting with them. Um, again, they asked, uh, for more information about the state foundation payment, so, um, that's the update at this point.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Could I continue with that? I, I think it would, it totally is not, it's not germane, and I know that's our position. Um, and I, I think it would be useful for us to be able to explain why it's not germane from a standpoint that we are not a, the state of Ohio is not a party of this, party to this negotiations, that's the primary reason, but financially, why it doesn't make sense either, and practically, why it doesn't make sense. It seems to me we probably need a page, uh, that even the, the most casual reader could get through, uh, to understand financially why it is not germane, besides it being a negotiations position. And, and what I'm, what I'm hearing, too, is that, uh, the public entity, us, passed a resolution and wanted to make sure that it was sent to the publicly elected people. I don't have any interest, like, well, I, at least I don't have any interest in us necessarily as an elected body, uh, speaking with people that are not elected. Seems to me that this is an elected body dialogue with an elected body, and, and we send negotiators in, and we're comfortable with our negotiators, they must be comfortable with theirs, but it would seem to me that we need to be, have more direct contact with the nine city council members and the mayor about why aren't they moving ahead? They may or may not even know that they're not moving ahead, and I don't mind if somebody explaining to city council what, about state foundation. I mean, I think we got to up the, up the ante on, and put the pressure where it should be, which is on the elected body, rather than necessarily the administration.
Okay. Um, Ms. Bates?
And to tag team on that, that really wouldn't be Daniel's responsibility.
Right.
That would be Carolyn, so we should direct Carolyn to communicate with the mayor and city council. If there is to be a presentation, then she could ask for support from the rest of us. If there is to be a presentation, then she could ask for support from the rest of us.
Yeah. If I, if I could follow up on that, I mean, it would seem to me that we're gonna have to make the point as to why it's not germane, but more particularly, we're gonna have to educate city council as to what we're requesting and why it's reasonable, and that they're going to be held accountable, not necessarily the city manager. So, it just seems to me that we need to have more communication.
Mr. Morosky?
So, thank you for the update, Dan. What exactly do they, when their legal department got back to you twice and said they wanted to know more about the state foundation form, or whatever, what exactly do they want to know?
They'd like to meet with the consultant that we have been consulting with. I ran right into that. And so, I mean, to that end, Jen and I have set up a meeting with our consultant to, again, put that kind of basic information together, both for you, potentially for the city. We were actually supposed to meet yesterday, I think, and he asked to reschedule until...
He scheduled.
It was, okay. We're meeting with him. We've rescheduled, though, correct?
I think so.
Yeah.
And who is this person?
Mike Sobel, he's a former treasurer of a school district outside of Columbus. He's been on the team that has been involved in reforming the state foundation payment.
Okay. I'm with Ms. Bolton and Ms. Bates on this, I mean, I feel like, at this point, ask our chair, our president, to reach out and get an update, because, to echo Ms. Bolton, who's to say that our counterparts at 801 Plum Street even know these conversations are going? I don't know if they do, and I don't say that with any ill will or any judgment or anything, but they got a lot of stuff going on, I don't know that they are talking about it or taking it as seriously as we are, and I can tell you that the past month, they haven't, I mean, been meeting. And while we may not have been meeting, I know we've had committee meetings, I've been here a number of times in July, this is evidence that we've been working, so, I don't know that they've even been working. Again, not said with any kinda judgment, but I think we need to put some pressure, like this is really important, and this needs to be done in the next few months, and so, I'm comfortable with you, President Jones, reaching out.
Well, what, when I review my notes at our meetings, we said we would prefer to have an agreement in place before the tax levy.
Right.
So, that puts some, I know, but that puts some pressure in terms of a timeline. The other thing that was in my notes is, I'm happy to do whatever the board's wishes are, and I'm comfortable with it, I can do that, but this is what we said we would do. We said, let's get admin, let's get our administration with the administration, so I think what I'm hearing is, it's kind of at a stalemate, I don't know what other word to use, so now it's time to up the ante a little bit, I don't know, but I think I need to be clear what exactly I'm going to them to say, and I'm okay with that. So, and then, there's an addition to this that I wanna share with the board, let me, let me just say it, and I don't know where it fits in the context of this discussion, but Pam and I were invited to a meeting at Development Strategies with Doug Mormon, who is a developer, and...
Is Doug Mormon representative of Government Strategies?
Okay, well, something, okay, well, it might be a different context. We got, okay, okay, but what, what my point is, is that when we went to the meeting, we went not having a clue how we even got there, or what the purpose of the meeting was.
I can tell you that.
Okay.
I could've told you that.
What? Well, send somebody to tell me.
So, I've met with, I've seen Doug Mormon around, I've met with Doug Mormon, he represents developers that want to get the tax abatements, and so, I mean, it was probably an educational sort of thing, I would imagine.
Well, okay, yes, and so, let me finish, let me finish my context, let me finish my context. After talking to them, I left feeling like it was a productive conversation to build relationships. I believe that. What we glean from that is that, and I understand that they also have an ongoing, they're also having an ongoing conversation, meeting, or whatever, meetings that they're having with the city, and I certainly, I think we certainly understand what their interest is, but the message that came from that is that they felt like we didn't know their perspective, in, you know, 'cause they even talked about this state funding thing, 'cause that's what they're hearing from the city. So, they, they wanted to have an opportunity to come to the board, to talk with us, dialogue about their positions, about the tax abatement process, not to advise us, but just really to inform us, educate us about their perspective. Believe it or not, I learned a lot of stuff that I didn't know before, and so, you know, when we, when we say, and I wanna remind the board, too, that back when we had the first fact-finding, we invited developers to the table, and at that time, nope, they declined.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But, you know, and the reasons around that were pure and simple. It was, they didn't know what to expect, and they understood the dynamic between us and the city, they didn't wanna be caught, as they described it, sort of in the middle. But what they're saying to us now, and Pam can jump in there anytime, is, is it possible for us to at least come and have a dialogue with the board about our position, what we think about it, and that they didn't ask us for anything? And so, I'm adding that to this conversation for us to consider, because I said to them, first of all, I asked them to give me a letter, so I could share it with the board, and then I said, maybe one of the things we could suggest is to have a fact-finding, so that they could present in front of the public, and they would, they were happy to do that, and I'm waiting on a letter to see if they were interested in that. So, anyway, Ms. Bolton first, and then Ms. Bates.
Yeah. Of course, that's okay, because we invited them three months ago to do exactly that, and they didn't come. And so, it's, we can have another fact-finding, and I think we should, or have a board meeting.
Have what?
They need to have a board meeting, they need to conduct whatever they're doing with us publicly, or we will be compromised.
Oh, I understand, but I was thinking that the fact-finding would also be public, but whatever type of meeting is...
Yeah, fact-finding can be public, and it's supposed to be, you know, or whatever, it doesn't, it can be noticed or not noticed. You will then also, at that time, not just have developers, but you're also going to have the adversaries of the abatement also appear. So, we're gonna reopen the whole community dialogue again, after we have already passed a resolution. And my understanding is, we passed a resolution, that is our position, and that is what we've sent our administrators in to negotiate. If we look like now that we're gonna reopen the engagement piece, are we saying we don't believe in the resolution that we passed? I mean, I thought that was a very historic thing for us to do, and it was a position to take. I completely understand why they wanna come in, and they should, but they should've when we were still working through this. I do think we've advanced far enough now that our administrative people, our negotiating people are talking, we probably have reached some conclusion to, based upon what the general council and treasurer said, is that we are going to share our reasoning regarding why it's not germane, and also do some education quickly about the state foundation, and then start the negotiations, continue the negotiations based upon the resolution. I just don't know why we need to go back, because now that's gonna extend it, we're gonna look like we didn't mean the resolution in the first place. They're, they can come and testify all they want, but we passed a resolution, and we told these people to go in and negotiate based upon that resolution.
Ms. Bates first, Mr. Morosky.
Well, what I believe this board needs to do tomorrow is send a letter to the mayor and each city council member with a copy of our resolution, urging them to adopt a supporting resolution, because probably, I mean, it's a reasonable resolution, and we could have the support on council to support what we're doing. We don't know, because nobody's gone to them. So, that would be, if the board also wills, that tomorrow, a letter go out to the mayor and all city council members, hopefully, we can get Carolyn to take the leadership to help compose that, with some administrative help, and get that moving. They'll have it by Friday, and that's our position, and that's, and asking them for support, and a resolution from council.
Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. I, I agree with Ms. Bates, I think that's fair, I mean, at this point, if for no other reason than to, I don't know if I'm necessarily all in favor, even though I don't oppose it, of saying now we wanna see a resolution from you all, or whatever it is, supporting us. I would just like to hear that they've received it. Quite frankly, my ask, I guess, is a little lower, like, they even know about it, because I'm not sure they do. I think they do, but I'm not entirely sure. And also, I tend to, I tend to, torn, but I tend to side with Ms. Bolton on the piece about having folks present, because I, you know, I felt it was incumbent upon us to learn more about abatements before we did the resolution, which is why, as you may recall, I pushed back a couple of times on a few things, primarily the length of time in the residential piece, and when Mr. Drehouse was here, I pushed back, and I got pushed back, but that's neither here nor there, regarding the lead abatements, and how I'm not opposed to residential abatements in certain neighborhoods. However, I'm all about the will of the board, and I support our resolution. My point of that is to say that I did some due diligence, I met with people, I wanted to learn more about abatements, 'cause guess what, I'm not on the abatement board, I'm on the school board, I know a lot about education, I don't know crap about abatements. So, I learned about it before we passed the resolution, which is why I had the kickbacks that I had throughout that process, and I do feel like at this time, and I'm fine with folks coming in and presenting, there's a lot of very level-headed, great developers in town that wanna get their piece and do good for the city, and then also support our kids, but at this point, if we invite them to come in, I do think the optics are bad. I also feel like we're wasting these, a very busy developer's time, because we've already approved a resolution that we all support, because it's the nature of our board, so I don't, I think it might just be a futile exercise, even though it's well-intentioned, and I like those, I have no problem, but I don't know what the point is.
Mr. Davis?
Well, there is one reason to invite the developers to speak, is primarily the developers will have to have a better relationship with the school board if we don't have an agreement with the city. So, it may be just that your resolution was just that strong, and that if you don't have a, if you don't have an agreement with the city, then you'll be making decisions that will impact developers much more greatly.
And it is the information, based on my understanding at this meeting, it was what they said about exactly what you just said. It is what we don't know that really concerns me. And there's nothing that's saying that we would compromise the resolution. I voted on the resolution, there's nothing that says we would compromise our position on the resolution, but there's everything to say that we're looking for a win situation for the district. I want as much information as I can get to move on with this, and if it means hearing more from developers, then that's what I wanna do, but, you know.
It was very beneficial for me, educational point of view, like you said, Board Member Davis, and I agree with President Jones, that we, we need information that we just don't know, and I don't think we need to, we can't change the resolution that we sent, but it's really for if something else happens, or just ongoingly collaboration and having that partnership, we're gonna need that. So, I think it would be beneficial if they do come to speak.
And the effort, the conversation was in no way, shape, form, or fashion intended to sway us one way or the other.
No.
'Cause they said to us, we meet with the city, we know their position.
Right.
And I'm just gonna be very honest and direct about that, I don't know who it was that said, somebody said, well, you know, the city might be in it to make money, we don't know, but we're telling you our position, how this impacts us, because the bottom line is, it is, the relationship is between us and the city, and they recognize that. But again, us not knowing exactly how this tax abatement piece works for developers, what they're trying to get, whatever, they're gonna get what they're getting, but we, I wanna be in the best position possible to negotiate whatever it is we negotiate with the city.
Right.
Ms. Bates? I'm sorry, Ms. Bolton?
I think there's a compromise here, so that the board remains united, because that's how we got through FC.
Yeah.
Is having a united board. I don't wanna have a fact-finding and have everybody come and testify again, because that work is done. I don't mind if they want to come and make presentations during our public sessions to explain their interests.
Right.
But to reopen it as an engagement piece, we would have to invite everybody back, or everybody here, and I don't think that's helpful. I think they can come, and they can testify, I think that would be useful. I do think we can show some degree of flexibility in arguing why we don't think the state foundation piece is important, 'cause that's the dime they've got us on, and we've got on, and we can't move off, but it sounds like administration's already figured that out. So, we make that presentation as to why it's important, and to the point, I think this, not just the president, but this board sends a letter to the city council and the mayor with the copy of the resolution, saying, listen, we've, we're gonna be doing this or that, but we are concerned that you all are not motivated to, or may not know all the things that have either not been done or done. So, I think you can do all three of these things, but the resolution stands, and we cannot move that resolution anyplace else. We can have the developers come in without having a fact-finding or another open engagement piece, the administration can make the justification about the foundation, and we send a letter telling council, listen, we're doing this publicly, what are you doing? And we'd like to be, have either a similar resolution, or at least have you motivate your administration to find a solution to this.
Well, I think, any other comments, questions or comments? Okay. I think we're in a good place with that.
Yes.
So, I would say, let's move on, and when we get to assignments, let's give the specific assignment for the record. Where are we? We're at the superintendent's report. Superintendent?
So, I do have a couple of things to report, actually, more than a couple, but I'll be brief. So, our principals returned to work last week, and our teachers will return to work next Tuesday, I'm sorry, next Monday, and they will have a week-long of professional development before our classrooms open. In addition, I thought that the board might want to know that Forbes Magazine has declared Cincinnati Public Schools twenty-nineteen best in the state employer in the state of Ohio. So, this certifies, based upon the results from an independent survey that Forbes gave, it says that the following parameters were taken into consideration: attitude of the employees towards their own company, public perception of a company or industry employees. And so, we are very proud to be able to say that we are on our way to being a destination district CPS, so we're excited about that.
I also would like to just take a moment to give the board members some information regarding an item that is in the treasurer's report related to the CYC contract. And so, in the, and I'll make sure that I pass this information on to CFT President Sellers. So, in the CF, in the treasurer's report, it lists, and I know that you'll look at this, it lists assistant superintendent, so it looks like it's an assistant superintendent salary, that is not the case. This work is being governed by the assistant superintendent for secondary education, which is Shawna Murphy, and so, all of those contracts were under her. And so, on this, you will see that for the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year, that CYC actually serviced over six thousand kids, and in... serviced over 6,000 kids. And in 1718, they serviced over 5,000 students. And then you can see specifically the service areas that they provided service to us: mentoring, college and career success, along with work readiness. At the bottom of the first dashboard page, you'll see that that gives the promotion rate for the students that they actually worked with, along with the goals and the benchmarks. In addition, you'll have behind that dashboard is the mission and vision for CYC. The pages that follow outline the mentoring services and the specific schools that receive the mentoring services, college and career success, and jobs for Cincinnati grads. And so we've been able to identify the very specific schools that are benefiting from these services as provided by CYC. I do note President Sellers' suggestion to take a very strong focus and look at the agreement moving forward as it relates to aligning to our new strategic plan. But I want to provide you with that information.
Thank you.
And that's my entire report. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the superintendent's revised report.
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Bolton.
I think it'll come up more in the treasurer's report, which is where we are. But I am fascinated by the idea of how we do, and it would be the superintendent's responsibility, how we do begin to hold all of the vendors and contractors actually responsible to achieve the strategic plan goals. Because when we see these reports of how much money this group is getting, this group, I'm just going to tell you, is just one perennial finance member, not necessarily by choice. But the reality is, we can't afford all these, I'm not talking about CYC, but we can't afford to have this many vendors at this cost. It's, we're going to have to be able to figure some things out. And this budget that we've passed, we needed to pass because of the first year of the strategic plan. But that's probably where the dollars are going to stay for a long time. And we just are going to have to be very, very, at the site level and the district level, very aware of our master service agreements, all the vendor pieces, and almost no contract is too small to look at.
And to your point, I just want to add that I think we're starting to do it. I think we need to dig deeper into that. And I think board members as well need to reconsider because we oftentimes, too, we hear about things, or we want things, or whatever. So I think that plays into it. But I certainly agree 100% that it needs to be looked at. Because we could be looking at some of those things that Mr. Davis talks about.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Great.
We're actually extremely excited to have that conversation with our vendors. And so we will get on that ASAP.
Great.
As soon as the strategic plan is approved.
Yes.
Which could happen in the next 30 seconds.
In the 30 seconds, if nobody else has anything to say. Okay. Did we make a motion? Did someone make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, second discussion. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Yeah. You mean, you're not going to get, your team's not going to get up and dance like you did?
I know.
You guys missed it.
The music.
You all missed it.
They did that.
They danced.
Very good today.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
As a person that says this, especially during levy years, I think we, you know, some, a couple of years ago, we added descriptions of funding, of the funds, and the fund numbers in the front of all the treasurer reports, to the point that was made today about the confusion. When we get to the agreements, and it says vendor consultant name, it might not be bad to start to add department responsible. Or something of the equivalent, saying that it's, this is, this is coming under in the reports.
That's what it says.
Well, no, no, no. Even in the title, even in the, where it says vendor consultant name.
Right. So like, the first one on page three, the vendor consultant name, Hamilton County, Bond Hill is the one responsible.
Okay. But my point is, where does it say department responsible? I mean, this is where it's coming out of the budget. It's under the, am I just not understanding it?
This is the contract that Bond Hill initiated.
Well, I'm not talking about Bond Hill. I'm talking about over here on agreements.
Okay.
This one is where it's very noticeable. If there was confusion that the assistant superintendent was getting to be paid $397,000.
Well, all employees go through the superintendent's recommendations, not the treasurer's report. So anything that's in the treasurer's report is a vendor payment. But it's the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education who's responsible for these three contracts.
It's called department responsible.
Yes. Oh, you want me to put the word department responsible? I got it. I got it.
Yeah. I understand that she's not doing these things, you know, herself. But it is important that, you know, people, assistant superintendent, secretary, department responsible, or down, you know, anyplace else.
I got it.
Department responsible, ITM management, okay? That's who's responsible for this. That's who we're holding accountable. That's.
That will be updated on August 12th, board meeting.
Thank you.
Yes. That's an easy fix, yes.
That's Monday now. You know that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Two words. Two words in a bunch of places.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Inquiries and updates? I have one, but does it, Mr. Morosky?
Of like 17, it's not true. I know Ms. Bates just looked at me. Oh, boy. My first update, and I will provide a more robust update, but thank you so much for allowing me to represent the Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education at the Council of Great City Schools' first-ever Accelerating Board Capacity course at Harvard's executive educational program. It was awesome, and I learned a whole lot. And again, we'll report out more fully, but I just wanted y'all to know it was awesome, and I appreciate it. And CPS was very well-received. I texted Lauren a couple of times and emailed Laura a couple of times, letting her know how much I was bragging about our strategic plan, our community learning centers. People wanted to know about what we're doing. So it was really good. Second, um, second, 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 second. So Aiden Lennox, the Walnut Hill student who had done the We Dine Together Club that I met through our bullying, anti-bullying work, I caught up with him and his mom at a coffee shop two days ago. They wanted to let me know that, you may recall that I teamed them up with Molly Wellman to do a big event, New Rift Distilling, and they had raised a lot of money. And Aiden has since started his own nonprofit called Kind is the New Cool Inc. And his plan with his assistant principal at Walnut is to be able to offer kits, customizable kits, to schools for different programs that have worked that are student-led programs, like his We Dine Together Club. They're building that out right now, but this is a student who is a junior, who is taking it upon himself to start a district-wide foundation to bolster student-led anti-bullying efforts. It's pretty well-done. I'm probably going to ask him a teaser to my SAC friends to come and present at SAC again at some point. It's an update, so just a teaser. Eve just keeps, okay, fine. Let me carve out some time. So that's important, and I wanted to share that with everybody. Another one, I brought this up at our last board meeting or two board meetings ago, and it came up at SAC, but we don't have August 1st SAC minutes, so I just wanted to say it again. I have not quit my bullishness regarding imagination library and proper public purpose. And I brought a draft resolution to Student Achievement Committee stating as such, and it's been sent to Mr. Hoying's department. So I just wanted everyone to know that, because the way I understand it, if this board says something has proper public purpose, it does. And so that's with Mr. Hoying right now. He's reviewing that. But at some point, I would like to have a serious discussion about that, not an in-passing discussion with this full body.
May I ask why it's in the, because it was in our packet, but why is it in a draft resolution?
The way I under-
And we've not had any discussion?
It, the way I understand, the way the law works, is that, based on Ohio Vice Code and the state auditor's recommendation, if a Board of Education defines proper public purpose, then it is. As a result, to try to expedite that process, so we could talk about it, I presented a draft resolution to Student Achievement Committee where we discussed it. And then Chair Bolton referred it to Mr. Hoying to see if it's either A, crazy and totally off-base, or B, if it's not, then it would be something that we could then talk about here.
Madam Chair, if I could, the, Mr. Morosky, I think, had raised the issue in a full-board meeting previous to the SAC meeting about the public, a proper public purpose regarding imagination library. I think when the folks were here presenting. And so it had, it originated in a full-board meeting. It then came to SAC because of his interest in that, that's kind of the jurisdiction. When he presented us with a draft resolution, the initial request was, well, you know, can the committee pass this on to the board? The committee was interested in sending it to general counsel, because right now, we have at least one board member who has a different, you know, another, an alternative interpretation of proper public purpose. So we sent it there rather than bring it to the full board. But it will be mentioned in the minutes from that meeting that we'll be asked to pass the minutes next Monday. We already did two, we didn't quite, couldn't get three of them done in that time. So it might be a board matters thing rather than seeing a draft yet. But I think that's where we can at least talk about it. But right now, it's in the hands of the general counsel.
Yeah, I was thoroughly confused by that, by seeing it with no minutes attached, so I didn't have a context.
Right, exactly.
And it certainly is worthy of a full-board discussion, because I know for myself, I'll speak for myself, I was approached, I was lobbied a while ago to introduce this to the board for, to have the district take it on. And I was clear, I mean, at least my interpretation of, this is not something that was under our jurisdiction. And I said to the person, we can't take that. You know, so it's gone from one hand to the next, to the next. Now here we are again. And it's fine. I think we do need to have that conversation. So I hear that. Any idea, is it, is the conversation going to be Monday or sometime after Monday? So we'll know when?
This is the first I thought of, the idea from Ms. Bolton, that board matters would maybe be a good place to have it. So it could be in board matters on Monday.
Okay.
Or it could be in board matters at another day.
Well, procedurally, if it started in the board, you know, and then it went to the committee, and a member in the committee had a draft, we said, we'll take it to general counsel. General counsel may or may not be done with it yet.
Right.
But it will be in the SAC minutes, not to approve or disapprove.
Right.
Because we didn't, we did not recommend.
Yeah.
Right.
We took no position, is the way I.
Okay. And that, I think that's where my next question was.
Procedurally, I think, I think Mr. Morosky did it procedurally correct.
Okay.
And so, but if we're going to have a dialogue, it can be in board matters prior to us having a draft maybe presented, or if the draft, if general counsel's done. I don't know. But that seems to me that at least in a discussion on Monday.
Okay. Well, if SAC committee decides to put it on the agenda, I think they're, the ladies are going to be asking folks for agenda items. I just want to make sure if that's what you want, to get it on the agenda.
Well, it may be the committee, or maybe Mr. Morosky that puts it on.
Okay.
Whatever.
Okay.
The superintendent.
All right. Yes.
I would just like to make the board aware that on Wednesday next week, the 14th, general counsel and the treasurer and I have a scheduled meeting to go through and look at proper public purpose. And so I'm not sure if we would have any information for you by Monday.
So, okay. Well, given that, can we just put it on the agenda after that, following that?
Sure.
Okay, great. Wonderful.
Twenty-six.
I am glad I included in my updates.
Okay.
I am not finished with my updates. One more thing that I have that I would like to just pass to the board members. And I guess maybe make an assignment later for next school year, so I guess I can wait until May or something. But two things. One, update, I have a school supply list here of one of our schools juxtaposed with not one of our schools. And our school is the one that is a really long list. And this is, I'm pointing the finger at myself and all of you, all of us together. This is not on anyone but us, in my opinion. I've always known that we ask parents to buy lots of supplies for their classroom, whether because we're not providing to the teachers or to the schools themselves. But to me, $75 is a lot of money to the moms that I work with, full-time in the community, when I'm not doing this. And to ask people to buy things like Clorox wipes, to me, is kind of appalling. I think our schools are better than the school that's got that short little list. In fact, I know our schools are better than that school. But I was kind of disturbed by that. Secondly, I was further disturbed that Tax Free Weekend, which is a whole nother philosophical conversation, it's a shame that even has to exist, but that a number of our schools hadn't gotten out their supply lists by Tax Free Weekend, that I heard from parents. Now, maybe I'm wrong, maybe that did have-
It was on the website.
That's not good enough. We're talking about, we've talked about hiring people at our managed campaign, go door, it's on the website. Like, parents need to have this stuff. And that, to say to a parent, or to just dismiss it like that, it's on the website, I'm just not comfortable with. We need to ensure that our families have these lists before that weekend, before the school year starts.
I wasn't trying to dismiss it. I was just making a straight, a straightforward comment.
That was dismissive.
Because I, because I, you know, I talk to parents as well. And if I have to help them get the list, which is what I did, then that's what I did. So I wasn't trying to be dismissive. I understand.
But I think it's incumbent upon us to make it as easy as possible for them to have it, and not have to necessarily run around. Because how many parents can access us? How many out of the amount of parents we have can access one of us seven to get that list hand-delivered to them?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could speak to that. I do think it is a lot to ask our families, any families, to bring Kleenex boxes and Clorox and what have you. If we cannot provide the security, the safety, the cleanliness of a building with this budget that we have, that's a problem. It's bad enough for folks to have to, you know, get the kids' clothing and the supply list, and they want particular book bags or whatever. This should be a real big time of excitement instead of confusion. I had, of course, I, I'm the one that couldn't figure out what the logo was. You know, that's how luddite I am. But I had issues finding exactly what the supply list was for particular schools. I think it's very simple that it not necessarily be by school, it could be by school, should be, but it should be a very simple thing on the website, if you will, that they can just click the list and get there. I mean, there's plenty of things we can do to make things easier. Because I am like, almost 70 years old, and I can remember going to get the supplies with my mother at the dime store in College Hill, which is now a pizzeria, and making sure I had the right Schaefer pen because I was going into fourth grade. These are very exciting times.
It is exciting.
I mean, it's exciting for the parents. And I did get a number of calls. I was able to help some people. But we can do all this so much better. That's part of that community engagement piece.
Thank you.
Comfort level.
As a parent and working in many schools, schools are very lenient with when these things come in. It's not all the first day. Sometimes they ask from throughout the year, a little bit at a time, whatever families feel like they can do. But if they don't have all these things, it's not that they're not going to be able to be successful in the classroom. This is just to help the teachers offset the cost of them coming out of their pocket. And they do that a lot. And so, as a parent, yes, I bought things at the beginning of the year priority. But in October, it's time to replenish those things because all the things that they did send in August are all used up. So I understand your point. A lot of times, parents come with everything that they need, and this is not a big issue. But if they didn't have it, it's not that the students are not going to be provided opportunity to use these things.
My issue is when they get it, and that the parents have it before that Tax Free Weekend, because that weekend exists for a specific purpose.
This is year two of that, right?
Right.
This is year two of that. It hasn't always, Tax Free hasn't always existed in Ohio.
We couldn't figure it out a year ago.
But I mean, that's a good point, and a lot of schools do mailers, they send things out weeks before, but it, I agree.
I'll own it that we can do better.
It should be better.
One, one more comment, yeah.
Uh, yeah, from a financial standpoint, it would make much more sense for us to buy in volume than to send out our families to go get things that are not in volume, that are retail. There, and if there are certain things that are needed in every building, then they're needed in every building. And they, so I just, it's a, there's, there's a lot to be talked about, and I think we should have the parents help us figure out how best to do this.
Any, Ms. Superintendent?
Yes, so this list was brought to my attention by one of my staff members regarding some of the things that were on this list, like Clorox wipes and those things. And I told that staff member that I would look into a way to be able to provide these materials for our schools so that parents wouldn't have to buy it. There are many of our schools who have a system in which, over the summer, you, the, the parent is emailed a list of supplies and a company that provides the, those supplies for you, and they drop it off at the school. And the price is actually a pretty good price, so it's bought in bulk. So the parent never has to exchange, go to the store or anything, and it's like a really reasonable, like half of this price of this. It does require, though, that you would have to have a credit card and be able to access it in that way. There are things that we can put in place at the end of this school year to ensure that we have the list from every school that is communicated out in a timely manner before school ends, and that we can look at these items that, as a district, we should be providing for our teachers.
Great, thank you. Ms. Morosky? Are you, you said you were...
Satisfied?
You're done?
I'm not satisfied, no. I don't have any more updates.
Okay. Any, anybody else, inquiries and updates? Okay, I just wanted to remind folks that September 23rd, we have our 6:30 meeting at a school site. And typically, we ask administration to decide which site we go to and let us know. Once you've done that, so we can make sure we put it on our calendars. Okay.
Might it be the board's will to have this at one of our new schools? That, that will be just the opening?
Let's do Campbell.
Anywhere but Campbell. Oh, I forgot Pam's on the board, I'm sorry. Campbell's great.
Okay.
Could I ask how many, we're doing that three times this year, right? Is it three or...
Yes.
I think it's three times on the calendar.
Three?
Yes.
So just again, from the district standpoint, east, west, and central corridor. Well, I feel like I just blessed somebody on that one, but, yeah. So if we could do it regionally, that would be great.
Okay, great. Okay, assignments? Ms., Ms. Bates, followed by Mr. Morosky?
Yes, I assign to the board president the drafting of a letter to all of city council members individually, and the mayor with a copy of our resolution informing them of our position. And I would add, asking for, you know, collaboration with them on the resolution.
Okay. Next, any other, Mr. Morosky?
I have some homework for Mr. Hoying, potentially. You may all be aware of House Bill 164, yes or no, about religious protection, religious speech protection in schools. I have a letter from the ACLU that I've been drawing on, so I apologize, Dan. At first glance, it seems like it could be good, because as restricts Ohio students' rights to religious liberty in public schools, may sound like positive development, case laws are ever-changing, et cetera, et cetera. They give some instances where, say, a student in a biology class were to turn in a paper that said the earth is only 3,000 years old, that... I mean, these are extreme examples, but we've had examples even last year where some, a school was handing out a survey to students, and it was asking them to rate their spirituality. Mr. Hoying was on top of that very quickly, but that type of thing would be protected by House Bill 164. So my ask, and the last I checked, the first I checked, this didn't have any legs and no one cared about it. The last I checked, which was recent, is that it probably does have legs. So I would like, if, if Dan, if you, like, maybe research it, see if this letter from ACLU is on or off-base, and if potentially was something we would wanna take a stance on, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Bates?
I would say that's why we have government relations liaison. So I would rather that go to Finance Committee, and we forward that to Eric Kearney and George Glover, who are representatives instead of Dan.
To do what?
If that's agreeable to the board.
To do, I'm sorry.
To do what? To, like...
Research.
Research it more, or...
Right, I mean, they may come back and say, it's going nowhere. So, you know, I mean, because they know they're, they're there.
Make the assignment to Finance.
I would refer to Finance and put it on the Finance Agenda under Governmental Relations.
Okay, great. Any other assignments, Ms. Bowers?
I have an assignment for you, President Jones, to request the letter from Mr. Mormon and his developing group.
Already did.
Okay, thank you.
I'll follow up. Any other assignments? Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn into executive session at the end of this meeting.
For the purpose of...
For the purpose of, uh, property, is it property? Property and...
Can you say, can we say the legal...
Say the legal term, I'm sorry, I didn't have it in front of me. Sale of property, first one, and appointment of a public employee. And litigation, one was added. So purchase of property, sale of property, sale of property, litigation, and appointment of a public employee. Gotcha. So moved? Okay, any discussion? We don't need discussion. Who moved? Mike moved, who's second, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Bates.
Aye.
Ms. Bolton.
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Morosky. President Jones.
Aye, thank you.
Ms. Bolton, before you...